For a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission, members of the public can attend the meeting virtually or by phone by following the instructions on the Planning Commission Agenda webpage. If you would like to speak during the visitor portion of the agenda or provide testimony on the agenda item, please use the raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Winter, Lawler, Akal and Glenn Winkle. Commissioner Ellis is anticipated to attend, but not.
Sorry, I'm here. I have an idiotic video background from an earlier meeting, so I'm turning that off right now. But yes, I'm here.
Then just Commissioner Ellis is absent and excused.
Oh, Ellis is here.
McCann. Commissioner McCann is absent and excused. The visitor section of the agenda is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the Planning Commission. On a non-agenda issuer item, anyone wishing to speak should indicate this to staff and wait for your name to be called. Does anyone wish to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda issuer item? Staff has stated we do not have any visitors for this section, so we can move on to commission communications, any communications from the commissioners. Okay. Then we will move on to staff communication.
Good evening, Chair and I. I'm Anna Slatinsky, the Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. I do not have any staff communications.
Great. And moving right along, we can move on to new business. The first item on the agenda is the application for the floor and decor case file DR 2022-0078 and PD 2022-0006. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton code provisions. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are Beaverton Development Code sections 40.03.1 Facilities Review, 40.20.15.3(c) Design Review III, and 40.55.15.2(c) Shared Parking. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to these issues may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte conflicts, or site visits to declare? I will start with Commissioner Winter.
I'm very familiar with the site as I walk by it on both the north and south sides with my dog on a regular basis. I did not make a specific site visit because of that, so I've had no contact and no conflicts.
Hey, Commissioner Lawler.
I have no conflicts, but I did conduct a site visit today, but did not encounter any individual.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
I'm familiar with the site, but have no conflict.
Okay, Commissioner Call.
I am familiar with the site, no contact, no conflict.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis.
Similar, frequent drive-by and other activities near the site, but no specific visits or conflicts.
Okay, and no to all three for me as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Okay, let the records show no response. The order of the public testimony, a public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will be given will give a presentation followed by questions of staff from the commission. The applicant will then be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by commission's questions of the applicant. Members of the public in support of the application may then speak for up to five minutes. Each members, followed by members of the public opposed to the application, may speak for up to five minutes each, and then last members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will have five minutes, up to five minutes each to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear final comments from staff. We will now begin with city staff for presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lena Smith. I'm an associate planner. Before I get started, I just want to confirm that you received two supplemental memos. One was sent on Monday and one was sent earlier today. Okay, great. I'll go ahead and share my screen. So tonight I'll be presenting on the floor and decor design review III and shared parking applications. The subject site is located near the intersection of Allen Boulevard and Highway 217. Last year, Planning Commission approved the Phase 1 Allen redevelopment project on the northern portion of the site. The approval was for a new hotel and two commercial buildings with a fuel center. The approval also included the flood basin on the southeast portion of the site. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the Phase 2 site, which is located in the southwest portion of the property. The entire site is about seventeen and a half acres and will be consolidated into one legal lot, and the lot consolidation was approved as part of the Phase 1 approval. Tonight's proposal includes two applications. The first is a design review III for a new 75,100 square foot floor and decor retail building with associated site improvements. And the second is a request to share required parking between the Phase 1 and 2 sites. As detailed in the staff report, the proposal complies or can be conditioned to comply with all applicable design guidelines for building design, parking, landscaping, and lighting. However, Phase 2 relies on Phase 1 constructing certain critical facilities and services in order to have those services available to the Phase 2 site. This includes water and stormwater service, pedestrian and vehicle access from Allen Boulevard, and frontage improvements such as sidewalks on Allen Boulevard. Therefore, staff has included conditions that state if these items are not constructed by Phase 1 by the time Phase 2 wants a temporary occupancy permit, then Phase 2 will be required to construct the items. This is to ensure those critical services will be available before floor and decor moves into their building. The applicant has also applied for a shared parking application. The Development Code requires floor and decor to provide a minimum of 248 parking spaces, but the applicant ran into a site constraint because they're proposing to preserve a row of existing mature trees, so they are short 39 spaces on the Phase 2 site. Therefore, the applicant requests to share parking between the Phase 1 and 2 sites. As detailed in the applicant's parking analysis, adequate parking will be available for all uses on both sites. Staff also recommends a condition for Phase 2 to construct the 40 spaces shown here if they are not constructed by Phase 1. This will ensure adequate parking is available before floor and decor moves into their building. I also want to mention there are two City of Beaverton easements located on the southern portion of the Phase 2 site. As you can see, the easements conflict with the location of the floor and decor building and some landscaping and a stormwater facility, stormwater planter. The applicant has submitted a request to vacate these easements, which is currently being processed by staff in a separate application that will be decided on by city council. Even though Planning Commission will not be voting on the easement vacations, I did want to mention them because we included conditions in tonight's application that state the city won't issue building permits until city council approves the vacations and that floor and decor can't move into their building until those vacations are recorded. Overall, staff recommends approval of floor and decor's design review III and shared parking applications with the recommended conditions in Attachment D of the staff report. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do commissioners have, oh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, hi there. Lena, thank you very much for walking through that. A question for you. One of the public comments that came in from a Randy McCourt, really relatively well-detailed piece of commentary about pedestrian pathways and so on and so forth on the site. Does any of that material, the recommendations from that comment, does any of that bear on this application? Or were all those more commentary on how, on niceties within the current proposal? Is there anything that we have to address in there?
So we did review the comments, and for example, some of the suggestions exceed what is the minimum required by code. So we did review and compare with the findings in the staff report, and we believe that with the current proposal that the applicant has and the conditions of approval, they're meeting what the code requires. The public comments that were submitted exceed the minimum requirements.
Okay, okay, cool. Thank you.
Do other commissioners have questions?
I was wondering if you could highlight for me and maybe the audience where where the bike path, that was the subject of comments at the neighborhood meeting and with some of the public comments about the connection with the bike path. Could you kind of speak to that and maybe have the site plan up to kind of illustrate where that can occur?
Yes. So the bike path, or there was a condition with Phase 1 for a 16-foot-wide multi-use path. Oh, and excuse me, this is turned around a little. This is actually North Allen Boulevard. So we are focusing on the Phase 2 site, the floor and decor site over here. The multi-use bike path or trail would run north-south along this property line, and it was conditioned to be dedicated as part of the Phase 1 approval. And I think the applicant may have more information on the timing of when that's going to be recorded.
How does that play into the, or connect with, or maybe not, with that easement that will be removed? What was the purpose of that easement and how has that been supplanted by more recent planning efforts?
Sure. The easements, the easements run east-west. I know it's a little turned around. They run this way and then terminate at Highway 217. We're still reviewing the application, but we have spoken to receive preliminary feedback from other agencies such as ODOT and THPRD, and the preferred alignment would actually be to have it connect from the trail going north-south to Allen Boulevard. We're not really sure of the history of why it went this direction and then just terminated at Highway 217, but currently the preferred alignment is to go north-south.
So they, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with where the trail is at the south end of this property. Could you kind of say, illustrate how the trail alignment connects with the existing trail?
Yes. So this is the existing trail. It runs along Fano Creek. The easements would have extended the trail onto the Phase 2 property and then terminated Highway 217. And then the preferred alignment is to continue the trail to go north this way.
Okay. So, so all easements have basically already been secured through other projects to ensure that that trail connection?
The, the condition was required with Phase 1 to dedicate this easement. I'm not sure if it's already been recorded yet, but I believe the applicant can provide more info. And then the ones over here have not been vacated yet. They need to be reviewed by city council, and that hearing is in April.
Okay, that they don't seem to really connect anywhere. That was probably a previous iteration of the Fano Creek Trail, I assume?
We believe so.
Okay, all right.
Do you know other commissioners have questions? Um, I have a question. Did you, as staff, discuss or look into a requirement to have a pedestrian connection from Phase 1 pad 2 over to this building site instead of having to go essentially over across the main drive and then back, and then essentially you would have to cross the main drive twice to get from either pad 1 or pad 2 over to this building?
So you're referring to this area, another connection going this way? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
We felt that the connection, this is the main pedestrian walkway that runs through the center of the site, so we felt that was adequate in meeting the pedestrian connectivity guidelines and standards in the code. But I may defer to the applicant to explain if there was some type of site constraint for this area. I'm not sure if that would be now or during the applicant Q and A portion.
So the staff feels it's safe to request people cross the main entry drive twice to access Phase 2 building from Phase 1 buildings?
The main entry drive?
Yeah, if you're yeah, if you're on the western half of Phase 1, two little buildings, you have to cross that entry drive twice to safely get to Phase 2. And you have to cross it and then go down and then cross the parking lot to get into the...
Let me see if I can zoom him. Sorry. So coming from here and then crossing?
Yeah, you have to. And then you have to go down and then cross the parking lot driveways.
Oh, I see. Does transportation have any comments on that, or perhaps I can defer to the applicant team?
Good evening. This is Kate McQuinn, Senior Transportation Planner with the Plane Division at the city of Beaverton. I would just add that because the the code really requires one connection to the public street, and we also were prioritizing the one side of Phase 1 that has already been approved where the shared parking was, anticipating that there would be some obvious bed connections from that parking area that's highlighted on that graphic in kind of that pink shaded area. So our determination was that that was good enough. I would also pause to add if there's anything that the applicant would like to further add or if the commission has questions for them after their presentation.
Okay. All right, we'll ask them. Do any other commissioners have questions and stuff? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the applicant presentation. You'll have 20 minutes. Please begin by introducing yourself and stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jen Rinkus. I'm with Basinger Partners Architecture. And I'm going to apologize for the cough drop. It's been a, it's been a rough start to the new year. I'm going to try to touch on all of the comments. You guys had some great questions. So as I go along, I'll see if I can incorporate them into the presentation. I'm going to try not to duplicate a lot of what Nina already mentioned. Just a quick aerial of the site. Everyone sounds like they're pretty familiar with it. We've been in front of you guys several times already with the various phases of the project. There we go. So as Lena mentioned, all the development here in yellow was already previously approved last year as Phase 1 of the project. To quickly touch on...
Hey Jen, I'm sorry. Are you sharing or wanting to share right now?
Sorry.
Apologies. Thanks.
No, thank you for mentioning. I thought it was already sharing here. See if that works. Can you see that now?
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Sometimes my computer going between Teams and Zoom doesn't always function well. I don't know if you guys can see that. There we go. Okay, so we'll just back up one slide here and really just the aerial. Everybody's familiar with the site. The area in yellow here was what was previously approved last year as Phase 1, as Lena mentioned, the hotel and the pad buildings. To give a little update on that, it also did include that trail that connects to Fano, and it is right here along the east property line. We worked that out with this multiple meetings with the city and THPRD in the beginning phase of the project. We actually received the confirmed signed dedication document from the city just today, and so we are working on getting that recorded with the county. It will be done no later than Monday, so that pathway will be dedicated. We have a developers agreement that is in the works as well. I believe it's with the city attorney's office right now for a few corrections and modifications, and that will come back to my team, and we will get that recorded as well. The plan is that the contractor doing the hotel construction will also build this 16-foot pathway as part of their work. So as soon as we can get our permits, we will be underway on site, and both of those things will be being constructed, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. We only have a couple of conditions left to satisfy before we can get those permits released. And I think it was Jennifer, you had the question about a connection. We'll get to the proposed development here with floor and decor in this southwest corner as Phase 2 and why there wasn't a connection on this site here. When we did Phase 1, we did add a pathway here at the city's request to kind of facilitate a circular movement of pedestrians around this upper area. But with the drive-through here and some of the constraints for required landscaping and setbacks, we didn't want to we wanted to provide a connection, but we didn't want to actively encourage a large amount of people coming through this area because of the drive-through for safety concerns. The main driveway is wider, has great pedestrian access and circulation, some separation with landscaping from vehicle, vehicles entering and exiting the site. So we wanted to try to encourage folks to use the safer route, which is this main access drive versus having people, a larger number of people come through or near the drive-through location. And we weren't able to extend a walkway along the whole side again because of setback requirements and landscaping requirements. So as we get to Phase 2 here with the floor and decor, we did not, there was nowhere to provide a pedestrian connection to since there wasn't a walkway approved as part of Phase 1 on this western side. As Lena mentioned, we have about a 75,100 square foot floor and decor building with parking, associated parking, pedestrian circulation, landscaping. Building is outlined in blue. And so as we talked, this, this view is rotated with north and Allen Boulevard being over on the the right side, the east, the right side, excuse me, of the screen here. So the walkway from Phase 1 will come down and connect to Phase 2 here. This pedestrian pathway does come down along the whole western edge of the flood basin, and it will be a second connection to the Fano Creek Trail. And I have the same slide as Lena with the pedestrian walkways highlighted here in just a minute. It shows that all, both connections a little bit better. We did receive some public comments with some concerns about some of the walkway crossings, one of them being here through this drive aisle. The, we chose to do it here because we wanted as direct a connection as possible to the walkways down here that the city asked us to put into this parking field down here. And we chose to come through this way because we felt it was safer. If we had run the walkway along here, this, this area here is the customer loading area. And then we also have this area here, which is the the main truck loading area. So we're going to have a lot of large vehicles throughout this area, this corner of the building. We really did not want to carry pedestrians straight through that area. And we felt it a little bit, we felt it safer to bring them out, out this direction and around. And also, we're able to provide that way a direct connection over to the walkway in connection to Fano Creek further down the site along with the one that was up here at the north end. Just some quick elevations of the building. One of the comments that we, feedback we got from city planners to be able to meet all the design guidelines is the brick pattern. It's a little hard to see here on these drawings, but the brick, decorative brick along the base of the building, we have changed from a running bond, which is not allowed. This here on the bottom left is the running bond. This is clear, this is just to illustrate the color and style of the brick. We will update the permit set to include a stacked bond pattern on the brick for the elevations to meet the design guideline. In another moment too, we'll talk about a small retaining wall along the flood basin. And up here in the upper right is an illustration of the block material that we plan to use for that retaining wall. Here's that illustration of the pedestrian walkways, as Lena mentioned. In green here, coming down this pathway through Phase 1 has already been approved. And it will connect to the floor and decor site and carry people directly down to a direct ADA connection to Fano Creek. The existing Fano Creek Trail here on the west side of the flood basin, not illustrated, is that 16-foot pathway here along the bottom of the slide on the east property line, the multi-use path that will also connect to the existing Fano Creek Trail, so that we have two routes for folks to take. And there was a question about the easements that aren't shown on this drawing that are being vacated under a separate application, that one of them comes through the loading area here and connects over towards the basin. And the other one was kind of an L shape that came down here. And in the initial conversations, as Phase 1 got underway when we met with the city, THPRD and ODOT, and discussed where to put that multi-use path, folks, the city folks felt it best to move it to the east property line. They wanted it to connect to Southwest Allen as close as possible to the signal that is down here east of the site by the bus barn location. They felt that was the safest connection across Allen for pedestrians. As part of this project, we've chosen to connect this path as well to Fano so that folks have a secondary access as well because we know that's important to the public is to have that access to the creek and to the trail system down there. Lena also mentioned about the shared parking, and I'll touch on that briefly. Phase 1 provided 168 parking stalls, which was, which, you know, met the needs for the buildings approved under that application. Floor and decor site is providing 209 stalls on their site for a total of 377 spaces provided between the two phases. Initially, when we first submitted this application for design review, the site plan looked a little bit different. This is the current site plan with the shared parking. And I've got some trees. All these trees on the south and southwest corner of the site are existing, and they're mature trees, rather large trees. The current site plan retains all of these trees, both the yellow and the ones in green. And that saves about 326 inches of total tree circumference out there, which is a significant amount. The original site plan, just so everybody can compare, the one on the right is what we came in with initially. In order to meet parking, we had another row of parking down here along the south property line highlighted in blue, providing that parking to be able to meet, fully meet the parking requirement, the parking code. Standalone on Phase 2 meant we needed to remove all those A standalone on phase two meant we needed to remove all those trees in green, only the ones in yellow would remain. Uh, it resulted in a significant reduction in mature trees on the site. Um, we were going to have to mitigate those trees, which means that. We would put put back one inch of tree for every inch of tree we took down, however. Everybody knows that when you put back a tree, you're not gonna put back an eighteen inch or thirty-six inch tree, you're gonna maybe get a two inch tree. Um, it result. It was, it was a lot of trees that we needed to put back, we physically couldn't um. Put all of them back on the site, there wasn't enough room, but more importantly. It would take years, decades for those trees to turn into the trees that are already out there. Um, and so we looked at a shared parking analysis. Now we hired Kittleson Engineering. Traffic engineers uh to help us look at that and we determined that. With all the uses proposed on site, uh, both those ones in phase one and ours of phase two together. Um, there was never a time, uh, no matter peak hour during the week or peak hour during uh the weekend, which is the. Peak time with retail, um, the parking provided would never be exceeded. So shared parking would work. These graphics, um. They're in the traffic report as part of uh that was part of our application materials. I'm just gonna touch on them briefly, um, our traffic engineers are here tonight, one of them, and so if there's any specific questions, I'm sure they'll be happy to jump in in the end. And answer them. Um, but we looked at, we worked with uh the transportation department at the city and with Jabra and Kate and. Came up with a couple of scenarios to really make sure uh we understood how the parking worked and that it would actually. Be adequate if with a shared agreement. So this is a weekday analysis. The four hundred and fifty stalls is what uh is required by code. The ma- the minimum required by code if we took a worst case analysis of the site. Three hundred and the three seventy-seven is what we're actually providing. And so down here in this table, you can see. All of the uses proposed, we've got the floor and decor building at the seventy-five one hundred. And then these uses down here are actually what was approved uh for use and for size of phase one. And you can see that the actual, even at the peak peak hour on a weekday. Um, the required parking based on ITE code. Uh, is is significantly less than than what's. Going to be provided with three seventy-seven. Looking at a worst case. Maximum parking load analysis, we decided to take the uses that were approved in phase one. Uh, we know the hotel. Is definitely going in, we're close to permits um within the next couple of weeks on that. To begin construction, the two pad buildings, we don't have users for, so we said, let's look at. The highest possible use, if what if both of those were drive through. That's not what they're approved at, but just worst case for parking and you can see that even on. That that peak hour during a weekday, we still uh don't exceed the parking that's. Provided on the site with the shared parking agreement. Between the two uses. Um, same thing, we left it at the the highest use for the drive-throughs and looked at a Saturday and what the peak hour on a weekend would be. Because typically retail, uh, their highest uses on a weekend. So for all three of those slides, basically you could summarize and just say that the parking, the three seventy-seven stalls. With the shared agreement. The site fully complies. And provides adequate parking and it allows us to save um about fourteen mature existing trees. And reduce the amount of asphalt being put down on the site. Um, another, another thing I just want to point out, it wasn't a a big thing that came up in the staff report, but I just. I know it's important to the community, um, and I wanna make sure that we touch on it so that everyone has the information. Um, as part of phase one. There was some tree mitigation that had to happen in this area in yellow. Um, there were trees proposed to meet the uh. Hundred and twenty-one and a half inches of tree mitigation that we were required. And this is the second half of that landscape plan from phase one. Obviously, now our building is going smack dab in in the middle of this phase and those trees were kind of just. From phase one, we didn't have a user yet, we didn't have a site plan, they were just put in kind of speculating where they would go. As part of our development. We took into account uh that mitigation and the landscape plan here that you see by. We we provide not only the hundred and twenty-one inches from phase one that needs to to remain. Uh, remain on this area, we also provided for the additional uh a couple of trees that we needed to take out. And um. We satisfied a full mitigation for both our proposal and uh the remaining from phase one. To get installed on this section of the site. Um, the retaining wall, I just wanna point this out because it was a conversation we had with the city. There is a small retaining wall that runs along the edge of this new sidewalk uh between it and the flood basin. And to. I just wanna make sure everyone under knows that we're how we're meeting uh the design guidelines for that. Um, this is just eh elevation of that, if you were standing in the flood basin looking at that retaining wall. Um, you can see that the wall. The maximum wall height is about five foot four, um, about a bottom foot of that wall will be underground. Uh, so it will reduce the amount of. Wall face that you actually see from inside the basin. The the wall will be made out of uh. Versa lock block, so it'll have a nice block texture too, it won't just be a solid concrete wall. And then there's also uh landscaping, a large amount of landscaping that was approved under phase one. Uh, that will go in in front of that wall, a lot of. Trees uh and some and some native seed mix um to also screen that wall. Um, that's the end of my presentation and um if I've missed any of the questions, I'm happy to um to take. More questions.
Okay, uh Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, hi, uh Jen, thanks for the the breakdown, um, not not having been in on the commission in the last run. Of uh applications and such, one thing that caught my eye when you were comparing the original proposal. Or the actual retail space, um, the large retail space to to the current one and comparing the change in trees and such. The the loading dock area where the large trucks are gonna come in. Uh, on the proposal looked visually different, well, is that just a factor of? How it shows up on the plans or is it or is there something that's actually different?
The loading area itself should be the same and let me try to get back to that slide. Without making everybody seasick here. Sorry. Okay. I think it's just, it's um. So this area here, the the line work is just a little different, it's a little bit lighter on this side, but the the loading area. So this area here and this area here, they are the same in both drawings. Um, what what? Has changed besides eliminating the parking along this south, you'll notice that we did add this walkway right here. Um. To access this southern parking lot, to access the garbage and kind of create a loop around the building that was. Uh, also a result of some of the incompleteness comments that we got from the city in our in in initial incompleteness package. So originally, we did not, on this right hand side, you can see there was no walkway to this southern. Parking lot, so we did, we added that as well.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, do other commissioners have questions, Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Hi, thank you, I was just wondering how that walkway is gonna be designated, is that gonna be striped?
This area here, yes, at all, at all crossings of drive aisles, it will be striped in a contrasting material typically. Um, folks, we do concrete. Um. To designate it as a as a pedestrian pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioners? Okay, I'll ask my question, um, I mean, you kind of answered it, but I um. I'm leaning towards it doesn't feel safe, um, if you're. A patron or an employee. In the phase two building. And you want to go grab a cup of coffee or lunch at pad one or two. Um, the western half of phase one. I just don't think it's realistic that people are going to take the route that you're proposing. Um. They are gonna head directly north when they end, when they leave the building. And if there's not a path provided, they're just gonna cut through the parking lot, um.
Um. I. I understand your concern, um, and and yes. People, but people will do that regardless of of how many pathways we provide, um, one, one of the things. Couple of things to point out with that and and I don't know that I can eh enlarge here, so um. I can, I can find a different plan if this one isn't. Showing up very clearly to everybody, but. You can see here the pathway along this side of the building, it it actually ends here, the walkway does not continue around the north end of this building. Um. This is landscaping. Um, and. If folks for some reason. Do a dash, there there's a stormwater planner here as well, so this. Uh, approved in phase one, this whole strip right here is is a swale and stormwater facility, it'll be contoured, it'll be planted. Uh, it's not gonna be an easy thing to cross, um, we did that intentionally. One, obviously, because we needed stormwater uh facilities, but also with the. With the gas station here, we we wanted to discourage folks from doing a dash. Um, and so that that swale will limit that. Um, as will not having a sidewalk around this end of the building, it it will kind of direct folks. Um, to to use this path and obviously we can never, we can't force anyone to do anything, right? So, um, we are, we implemented um some design choices that we had control over to try to influence people to follow. Uh, and make good decisions and choose a safe path. And those were, those were some of the the design choices that were that were made and the reasons behind them because. We we did wanna eliminate, you know, or reduce, um. People, the 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 urge for people to dash through the the gas station.
Um, okay, do other commissioners have? Questions? Commissioner Glenn Michael. You're done, okay. Um, with no other questions from the commission. We can move on to public testimony portion of the meetings, um. We will call testimony in portion, um. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. Then those that oppose and then those neither in opposition or in favor. Um. So. For those we, um, so now's the time for public testimony, for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate. By using your raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar, if calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Don't know that we have any public testimony. We have one hand, Randy McCourt. Please state your name and address for the record when you are unmuted. You may unmute yourself, there you go.
Hi, I'm Randy McCourt, sixty-five twenty-eight Southwest Alden Street. I. Are you doing the supportive before the others or is it just anybody?
I think anybody, I don't think we have that many, that much testimony tonight for this application.
Okay, so I would have probably been ambivalent if there was concurrence about making improvements. For the pedestrian accessibility to the site, but I'm gonna have to say I'm opposed. Um, and I would stay opposed and encourage you to oppose the project until they clean up the details to make the pedestrian accessibility. It's not niceties, these are things that are essential to people that have. Uh, impaired mobility. That are looking for direct paths, they're not being asked to go walk around buildings and sideways, and I think Commissioner and I. Your comment about the pathway is required by your code. Facilities four oh point oh three point one F G K. All call for a safe, efficient pedestrian circulation patterns connecting. Uh, the circulation safely in a direct manner, not an obtuse manner. And uninterrupted access. And that means routes that aren't having to cross multiple four and five times parking aisles to get to the public right away. Chapter six of the sixty of the development code six oh point oh five. Point two oh, circulation and parking design standards. Uh, subsection three, number one. And if you go down to item C where it calls for access every three hundred feet, Chairman I, your requirement. For putting an access on the west side is mandated by your own code. That site frontage is seven hundred and fifty feet, one to the west, one to the east and one in the middle are required. With the new trail, they've got one with the access down the middle, they've got two, they do not have the third. It should and is mandatorily required and by breaking these two sites into parcels one and two and claiming that they can't do it because. It's the same property owner. Item D in that same section calls for landscaping trees and lighting along the pedestrian areas. That has not been done in the cases of many of the pedestrian trails and it needs to be added. Under six oh point. Four oh five point four oh for circulation parking guidelines, the pedestrian circulation requirements call for pedestrian connections. Uh, to be made to open spaces, their requirement to go in the middle of an aisle and the truck loading area is unacceptable, those paths should be directly towards the open space. And I, my letter that I've attached shows arrows how that could be done and could be done more cost effectively than their own design. Item C pedestrian connection should link to building entrances. Nearby streets and other pedestrian destinations, once again, the plan fails to do that in a direct manner, meeting your own code. And then finally, in item D pedestrian circulations. To street should be evenly spaced and separated from vehicles, once again, this plan fails to do that in detail. And it it doesn't need much to get there and in the written comments I've provided you plenty of details to that. But the most galling part is when you look at something like the plan that was just reflected on. The northeast, the northeastern corner of the building, the sidewalk stops. Ten or fifteen feet from the corner or someone who might be in a wheelchair that wanted to get the cup of coffee can't even get down to the ground because there's not. Accessible curb ramps placed. The curb ramps need to be placed at each location, the pathways need to be direct and straight. And the connections need to be made. According to your code and they are not, and I don't think any of these require substantial. Huge changes to the site plan, it's just a matter of thinking lines on the plan and and their grading. The last point I wanted to make was that there is a shared access agreement that exists between the Pepper Tree. And the sites, both sites parcel one and two. The fact of the matter is those are customers for their own site and to not demonstrate how pedestrians can safely, directly. And uh, and in a, in a direct manner of access to site. It's just not on the plans. In addition, ODOT has facing standards, there are Oregon administrative rules, they're required. And while they have not imposed those necessarily today, those exist today, seven hundred and fifty feet away from a freeway interchange. The Pepper Tree driveway is only two hundred and fifty feet, showing how that shared access will be provided. Is mandatory, and if they've done grading to put a five foot difference between the sites, they need to fix that. Before they come to you for approval. Uh, the details of things as small as just putting wheel stops throughout the parking lot that elderly people have historically had trouble with. They're not, they are absolutely to be avoided, ASTM standards call for them not to be put in place, yet they use them. All over this site, littered through the site adjacent to the part, the pedestrian pass they've created. Creating a tripping and fall hazard that's been documented in the past. These are not things that can, you know. That can't be solved easily, very simply just extending the sidewalk two to three feet. Accomplishes the same goal, it's the same paving, everything's the same. But yet. I haven't heard anybody say yet that they want to accommodate these things. Uh, a direct path, a much more direct path than a Fano Creek Trail down in this. Uh, the site's southern and eastern corner would be to the curb line, not in the middle of a parking area that trucks are circulating in. And so I. I I'm happy to answer any questions, there's a lot of details here that I don't think are that complex for this applicant to provide. I think they could provide them very rapidly and give you a great plan, I think Beaverton deserves a great plan and.
Randy, I'm. I'm sorry, we'll have to cut you off, your five minutes is up.
Sure.
But we, I appreciate the comments and the thoughtful response and the detail. Um, do any commissioners have any questions? Okay. Um, sorry to cut you off. Uh, we have to move on to the next. Um, public testimony, does anybody else wish to talk about this application tonight? Okay, seeing no other hands raised, we will move on to the applicant rebuttal.
Great, thank you, um. And I know, um, you know, for folks who weren't involved, uh, in. The lengthy development of this site over many, many years and many meetings at the city. Um, there's a lot of information and a lot of back knowledge that it's, it's hard to, um. It's hard to know, it's hard to, and it's hard for me to transmit succinctly. Um, one of those being that there's significant grade issues on this site. Um, we struggled with them throughout the project. Um, because of the floodplain, we needed to raise the site. Um, that meant that along this frontage, there in some places there are seven and eight foot difference between our site being above. Uh, the right of way greatly impedes being able to provide pedestrian connections that are ADA compliant, and that's, that's a must. They have to be ADA compliant. Um, the three hundred foot rule with, it is met with phase one. Um, we do provide the connection down here, um. So that is met along the frontage. Um, it was not extended along this property line as discussed, so. Providing a connection from phase two isn't possible. That walkway doesn't exist in phase one, there's nothing to connect to, so it's not a safe and wise choice. Um, all of the pathways associated with this project will be ADA compliant. They will have all required. Ramps and detection warnings, um, that are required to meet the ADA standards. Um, because this sidewalk ends here doesn't mean that it's not ADA compliant. We don't want someone spilling directly out into. The, the direct path of a car. We want them to take the designated pathways that are compliant, and that's why. The design is the way it is. Um, again, there's grade differences, but throughout the site, and so, and sometimes. It, sometimes it's looking at a plan, um, not knowing the history of, of the project, you can say, well, why, there should be a pathway here, just put one in. It isn't always that simple. Um, it, phase one was thoughtfully done, and we worked closely with the city, uh, all departments. To come up with a plan that meets the code, um, and provide ADA accessible access for everyone. Um. Another important point I think to point out is that, um, both these applications, phase one and phase two, were a type. Three design review, so I didn't quite catch all of the references to the standard, standards that were being given, but we need to be careful too that. Uh, the projects are meeting the guidelines, they're not meeting. They're not, uh, the standards aren't applicable, so some of the very specific requirements. Have some leeway for flexibility, and that's the point of a type three review. Um, we couldn't provide, um, a more direct pathway because of grade issues, need for landscaping and, um. You, you know, stormwater facilities, uh, uh, also, um, again, there's a gas station right here. We don't want to bring people through the gas station. It may seem like a indirect route, uh, to come down here. It's really not that far, and it is much safer for everyone involved. Um, a connection to the Pepper Tree, according to our survey, uh, the, the joint access easement is up here. Uh, in this northwest corner, that has been maintained, um, phase one originally.
Can I, can I, can I say something real quick here?
Oh yeah, sure, go for it.
There, I, I, that's the first time I've seen your arrow, your cursor.
Oh, really? I'm sorry, I.
I, I think we're seeing the, we're seeing the presenter view, Jen, not the presentation view.
I hit share and I'm not sure.
Yeah, you've been going up and down, and I've been looking all over for it, but I, when you just went across the screen, it was the first time.
Can you, can you see it now?
Yeah, that helps.
Oh, um, I apologize, um. So again, uh, just, just go back briefly, I know I only have five minutes, but like, talking about this, this connection here, and it just dead ending. We don't want to direct people, ADA folks, any folks, directly into the path of a car. So there is no, there's no ramp here. Uh, the ramps will be at all the connections that are intended for crossings. They all will be ADA compliant. Um, I was just mentioning, uh, joint access with Pepper Tree. Our, our survey shows that the easement for shared access is up here. Phase one needed two accesses, uh, for emergency circulation, emergency vehicles. And we originally had a connection right here with Pepper Tree. Um, I was told by, um, our team that we reached out multiple times to Pepper Tree, and we could not get them to respond to us. They wanted. No, to be, to not be a part of our project in any way. They didn't want a connection. They weren't willing to become part of the project, and to, to put in a joint access to them, they must agree to it. We can't just. Access someone else's property without their, their agreement, so the nor, that's why the northern end of the pathway down here. On the east side became the emergency access and the second, that second access for the property, so, you know, um. It, it's great to, to say we should have an access to Pepper Tree, but without their agreement, we, we just can't go and do that.
So Jennifer, sorry to cut you off, but you are out of your five minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, do commissioners have any questions? Um, with no further public, um. Sorry, finding my place on the script, um. Does the staff any, might, have any final comments?
Uh, I think staff would also like to reiterate that, um, they, the applicant is addressing the design guidelines instead of the design standards with this application. So, um, specific references, for example, the walkway every three hundred feet. Um, they're instead addressing the guidelines which allow for more flexibility. Um, the shared access with Pepper Tree in, um, we did see that in the ODOT comments. Um, that is outside the scope of the floor decor project area, and the crossover easement is located on the phase one site, not the phase two site. Um, does any other staff member have a final comment they'd like to add?
I'm honest, Latinsky, uh, planning division manager. Um, uh, so I, I just want to address a, um, a procedural, um, a procedural issue. Which is that, um, if planning commission, um, uh, closes the hearing and deliberates. Um, and would like to, uh, provide for a continuance for the applicant to. Um, consider whether they, um, would be amenable to revising the application to address commission concerns. It would be best if that happened actually prior to commission deliberation. Um, because we would need to actually renotice the hearing, um, if there is a continuance at that point. And Robin, um, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney can, can pop into, uh, to correct me or add nuance, um, if needed. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking about, um, what the right, what the right approach is, um. We can, uh, we can, uh, we can have a recess for staff to discuss with the applicant if that would be helpful. Um, but I just want to make sure the commission understands what their options are for continuing this hearing. Um, or for closing the hearing to deliberate on the application.
Uh, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney, yes, I will just add that once the hearing is closed, if, um, the commissioners. Continue the meeting, you would be just continuing your deliberations. If you wanted to reopen the hearing to allow additional evidence, say the applicant revises their application and wants to present. Uh, additional evidence, then, uh, we would have to send out notice again to reopen the hearing. So, um, but we don't have to send out notice if you continue the hearing while the hearing is still open.
So, we would pause now, I mean, we don't, we do staff, we do. Deliberations after we close the public testimony, so, are we saying, do you, are you? Are we taking a five minute recess? What is the request?
The thing that, that, uh, uh, a recess might be helpful for staff to confer with the applicant and, uh, see if the, what the applicant would like to do. If the applicant would like to request a continuance of the hearing, or if the applicant is, is fine moving on.
Okay, let's take a five minute recess. We'll come back at seven thirty-five.
So are we meeting staff?
Confirmed and we are comfortable with the commission moving forward, closing the hearing and moving forward with deliberations. Unless you have any other questions of the applicant before you close the hearing because now is an opportunity to ask any of those questions, voice any of those concerns. With, you know, following the applicant's rebuttal that we can respond to either staff or the applicant prior to closing the hearing.
Okay, do commissioners have any follow up questions? Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, hi, for the applicant, looking at the, I know that this, the in scope conversation is the, the, the phase two materials, but looking at the phase one to phase two interplay. Am I correct in assuming that traffic has to traverse, traffic has to either traverse the gas station property to get to the fast food pad or the, the pads that are on the other side of the, of the gas station, or they would have to traverse from phase one into phase two to essentially make a loop around the gas station section to hit that, to hit the pads on the other side, is that accurate?
Um, I, I think so, I'm, I'm very visual, so if it's possible, I could bring up the.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And let's see if I can get the right screen this time, so you guys can see my arrow, so can you see the arrow?
Yep. Yeah, so, so the question being that i- if I came in off of Al, oh.
Sorry, I was trying to make it bigger.
Oh, no worries.
Totally switched slides, okay, so if you come in off Alan, right here.
Yeah, so if I come on off Alan, the operating assumption is that if I wanted to hit um, the, the the pad or the fast food location closest to two seventeen, I would have to traverse the gas station traffic, the, the diagonal stalls. Um, or I would have to bypass that entirely, go to the, go into phase two and then use, use the front section of phase two there to loop around the backside. Are those kind of the operating assumptions there?
So you're trying to get to this building here, correct?
Yeah, or the, or the drive through above.
Yeah, okay, so here, here, yes, you come in here and you could either make an immediate right and come across that drive out, or you could come down around to phase two and around.
Okay. Okay, understood, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, do other commissioners have questions or comments? Um, I'll just say I still don't think that this is a safe pedestrian environment, so, um, but I may be in the minority, we'll see. Um, so if there are no other final comments from staff or questions from the commission, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and to standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. I will start with Commissioner Winter.
I, I understand the concerns about pedestrian circulation and things like that. I also have learned to trust our transportation program over the years. So although I might be alone in this feeling, I, I, I said I trust, I trust Chabra and um, the only really, and this is an off entirely different topic is because I've walked around this site so many times. I am concerned about the comment that staff drew and there I know there's a condition of approval. Make sure that the pond, the light seepage on the parking lot does not occur into the pond so that my ducks and mallards and snowy egrets and all my other floor and fauna out there don't get impacted by bright lights. Because there's really no need for bright lights at night at this retail site. I'd like to make sure that those, that one candle power limit is that, a final thing.
Okay, um, I think we've lost Commissioner Lawler somehow. Um, so Commissioner.
Hold that permanently.
I know, uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, I, I do, I, I have some trepidation, um, I, I, agreement, Chair and I, around some worries about the pedestrian safety particularly. Uh, particularly toward the southern, I guess that would be the, the southwestern and southern side of the face two, uh, where the the loading zones and the, and the pedestrian crosses, the, the pedestrian ways cross open parking lot. Um, and how those interplay with the projected pathways to get to Fano Creek and um, the commentary about, um, how do you, how do you handle car overhangs? You know, one, one large truck with a trailer hitch overhanging too far is gonna, is gonna kill uh, that pathway for certain users. Um, and, and the reason I'm worried about that is, is kind of, hence my question about the gas station and getting to the getting to the north westerly section of, of phase one. Um, you know, as a, as a driver, I would, I would take any chance to avoid having to traverse, uh, to traverse a gas station thoroughfare. And, and I would probably loop, I would probably look to loop around that phase two frontage area uh, to access the back corner as much as possible. Um, and then, and so that adds additional pressure of, of pedestrians who are avoiding not just natural traffic coming into the re- retail location, but um, any, any kind of back haul coming off the gas station, so the, uh, buying the, buying the notion from the applicant that they have to design the pedestrian pathways such that they, they don't let people willy nilly try to hop over things, it, it, it makes those, um, it makes those southerly and southeasterly guidances for pedestrians even more important. So that, that's my trepidation is that I, I uh, I'm with Commissioner Winter in terms of like trusting the, the team, but at the same point, I'd love to see some better cleanup on where those pedestrian pathways are in the, in the southeasterly section of phase two um, and better hard protection with curbs um, against that traffic.
Okay, thank you, how about Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, I don't have any concerns about the pedestrian pathways. Um, I think the city did a good job working with the applicant to come up with pathways, um, within the constraints of the site. Um, so I think it's a straightforward application and I'm in favor.
And Commissioner, a call?
I'm also in favor, it looks pretty straightforward, um, I think they've done the best with the plan they could creating those pathways.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler?
Uh, sorry, I missed some of the previous comments, my Zoom failure. But, um, nevertheless, I, I kind of went over the individual's comments and I really appreciate his comments, they're very thorough. Um, but I think the applicant has done a good job of kind of explaining why they made their choices they made. Um, that we've sure have planned or have approved a number of projects with wheel stops and with pedestrian accessways crossing, um, pedestrian paths and I have used those paths and I, um, I have found them to be somewhat safe, I don't think that they necessarily will result in any, um, uh, public safety issues. Uh, I, you know, and I think that possibly changing the location of that pedestrian walkway in the southeast portion of the site may then interfere with some of the landscaping and, and so you, like in all of these cases, we're trying to balance um, a couple of maybe competing goals, um, and I guess I would, uh, side with continuing with, um, a lot of landscaping, especially because it's right by the Fano Creek area. Um, so with that, I think I am, um, generally in favor of, uh, the way staff has worked with the applicant and how the applicant has worked with the constraints on the site to give us the best possible, um, development, and so I would be in support of moving forward.
Okay, um, so with that, um, Commissioner Lawler, do you want to make a motion?
Okay. So I move that we approve the applications for the Floor and Decor Outlets of America comprising case files DR twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven eight and PD twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 six based on the facts and findings found in the staff report dated February first. The conditions of approval included in this report in attachment D and the supplemental memos that were received on the sixth and the eighth of this month.
Great, thanks, do we have a second on the motion?
I will second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lawler moved and Commissioner Glenn Winkle seconded, do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will do a vote by roll call when your name is called, say yea or nay, Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Um, aye.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner, a call?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
And I vote nay. The planning, um, so the motion passes five to one, is that right, two, or five to one. Um, the planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal the decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and the Land Use Board of Appeals. So, we have a second item on the agenda, which is the application for the Queens Asian Cuisine case spot, case numbers. CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 six and CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 seven. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications, applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan and any applicable Beaverton Code provisions. That the criteria must be, the criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are the Beaverton Development Code sections forty point oh three point one, facilities review and forty point fifteen point fifteen point five point C, new conditional use. Test, testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission or other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. State law, state and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures to these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest? Ex parte contacts or site visits to declare, Commissioner Winter?
Um, I had, I did not take a specific site visit, but I've been by this site many times as it's fairly close to my neighborhood, um, I, so I had no contact and no, and no confusion or no conflicts, sorry.
Commissioner Ellis?
Um, I did make one, uh, no contact visit to the site, um, going through the materials, I wasn't uh, entirely good at visualizing, um, on the map and, and where some of the housing locations were, so, um, yesterday I did perform just a drive around, uh, the location and um, just to get a visual on things, uh, beyond that, I had no contact with anybody and, um, had no conflicts with anything.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lawler?
I had no contacts and I have no conflicts, I did conduct a site visit today and, uh, did not encounter any, um, did not have any conversation with anyone.
And Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
No to all three.
Commissioner, a call?
No to all three.
And no to all three for me as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte context or site visits or challenge the right of a commissioner to participate in this hearing? Um, the staff has stated that there was no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows, city staff will give a presentation followed by questions of staff from the commission. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for its presentation followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application may speak for up to five minutes each. Followed by members of the public who are neither in support nor oppose will then have five minutes to speak. After the tablet, after public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes rebuttal. The commission will then hear any final comments from staff, we will begin with the city staff presentation.
Great, good evening everyone, thank you Chair and I, my name is Brittany Gata, I'm an associate planner in the Community Development Department. And this evening I'm providing staff's presentation for the Queens Asian Cuisine applications. I'd also like to call the commissioner's attention to two supplemental memos that were distributed this week. The first was on February first and the second was today, both of them provided one new public comment to the commissioners. So the applicant, the applicant requests approval of two new conditional use applications. The first is to allow the meeting facilities land use to operate within the existing Queens Asian Cuisine building. The building is seen here at the northeast corner of the site which is outlined in red. And the meeting facilities land use is a conditional use in the development code in the Community Service or CS zoning district when that use is proposed within five hundred feet of a residential use in a residential zone, so we'll look at the surrounding zoning in just a minute. The second request is to allow extended hours of operation for the meeting facilities land use. And extended hours of operation are considered operations between ten PM and seven AM which is also a conditional use in the underlying zoning district when it is within five hundred feet of a residential use in a residential zone. The subject property is an existing roughly three acre commercial site at the southwest corner of Beaverton Hillsdale Highway and Southwest Laurelwood Avenue. And current land uses on the site include a gym, a dental office and a restaurant. The site is surrounded by a variety of zoning districts and land uses. To the north, the west and the south, properties are primarily zoned CS just like the subject property which is shown on this map in red and, and contain existing commercial land uses. Properties to the northeast and the northwest of the site are single detached residential uses that are zoned residential mixed C or Washington Counties R five zoning district. The closest residential property to the Queens property line is about one hundred and thirty feet away. Lastly, multi dwelling residential uses are located to the south and the southeast of the site and are zoned Beaverton's residential mixed A and B zones and Washington Counties R twenty-five plus zoning district. The applicant provided the site plan of the subject property. The building is identified by the yellow star at the top left corner of the site. This is where the Queens Asian Cuisine Restaurant currently operates and the building is shared with a dental office. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes to the site or the building with these applications. So the next two slides are going to dive into the specifics of the applicant's requests. The, um, for the first request, the new conditional use is to again allow meeting facilities. And specifically, the applicant is requesting to allow a variety of event types such as weddings, birthdays or other private events or meetings for up to two hundred and six occupants. And the occupants has to incorporate the number of guests and the number of staff. So if this request is approved, um, meeting facilities as a land use actually captures, um, any type of meeting or event and wouldn't just be restricted to the specific types of events, excuse me, events that the applicant is calling out for their own operation, so um, they could actually host other things like, um, like corporate office meetings and things like that under the meeting facilities land use. So the applicant is proposing to hold these events inside the existing restaurant space while the restaurant is closed. And all events are proposed to include some kind of amplified music. And lastly, no outdoor activity or exterior site changes are proposed, but I do want to point out that the applicant would be required to install bike parking facilities on the site to bring it up to compliance with the development codes bike parking requirements if these requests are approved. The applicant's second new conditional use application is for extended hours of operation. Um, these are specifically for the meeting facilities land use. And the development code considers hours of operation to include any and all business activity that's occurring on a site. So these requested hours of operation have to encompass both the time for the event themselves as well as any staff only time such as cleanup or loading before and after an event. Specifically, the applicant is proposing different hours of operation from Sunday through Thursday and on Fridays and Saturdays. Sunday through Thursday, the applicant is proposing to end events by ten PM, which means music will be turned off by this time. And all activity is proposed to end by eleven thirty PM to account for an hour and a half of staff only cleanup time. On Friday and Saturday evenings, events are proposed to end and therefore music turned off by midnight. And all onsite activity would end at one thirty AM. So before providing staff's analysis on the requested applications, I'd like to provide a summary of the public comments that were received on this project. During the processing of the application, staff received twenty-two comments in opposition. And there were five major concerns that were commonly mentioned in written testimony. The five most common concerns were livability impacts related to noise and vibration from amplified music. Ongoing unpermed, unpermitted activities at the site. Traffic and safety concerns. Opposition to modifications of the underlying zoning and enforcement challenges. This is not an exhaustive list of the issues that were raised by the public, um, so I'll reference the public comment summary and staff's response in the staff report. Staff's evaluation of the application's compliance with the new conditional use approval criteria did Staff's evaluation of the application's compliance with the new conditional use approval criteria did find that both requests for the meeting facilities and extended hours of operation meet all approval criteria of the Development Code by complying with the recommended conditions of approval. For the purpose of this presentation, though, I'll just be focusing the discussion on a few key approval criteria since they relate to noise requirements, mitigation of noise impacts, livability impacts, and compatibility of the proposed conditional uses with the surrounding neighborhood. So the first approval criterion I'll be touching on is the Facilities Review Criterion forty oh three one D, which requires that all new conditional use applications comply with the Chapter sixty Development Code standards. So within this chapter lies the requirements for noise generated by development. And this standard requires compliance with the State of Oregon's Department of Environmental Quality Noise Standards. I'll be discussing these standards in the following slides. Second, the new conditional use approval criteria number three requires compliance with all applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff found that the only policy applicable to these requests was policy eight point four point one A of the environmental quality and safety element. And this policy states that noise impacts must be considered during the development review process. And the policy identifies different ways that the applicant can take action to mitigate noise and demonstrate compliance with noise level standards. Staff's analysis did find that the requests were in compliant with this compliance with this comprehensive plan and policy due to the applicant's action to install sound dampening acoustic panels and the applicant's compliance with the recommended conditions of approval if these requests are approved by the Planning Commission. And lastly, during this presentation, I'll be detailing staff's analysis of new conditional use approval criterion number five, which states that the proposal must be made reasonably compatible with and have a minimal impact on livability of properties in the surrounding area. So I'll start with the noise requirements of the Development Code, Chapter sixty. As previous, as previously mentioned, the Development Code requires that applications establish compliance with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality or DEQ noise standards. And those standards that are applicable to Queens are identified on this slide. So in summary, the DEQ standards identify different sound level limits based on the time of day, which is either daytime or nighttime and the duration of that noise. So these regulations effectively allow louder noises for shorter bursts of time. The sound level limits themselves are the maximum decibel levels that are allowed by the State of Oregon when sound is measured from noise sensitive property lines. And in this case, noise sensitive properties are residential property lines, both multi dwelling residential and single detached residential. DEQ standards, um, use an A weighted decibel metric to measure sound, which is represented by the DBA acronym listed in these standards. According to the sound study and the supplemental letter submitted by the acoustical engineer on this project, the A weighted decibel metric significantly reduces the contribution of low frequency noise, often thought of as bass in the sound measurement. So because of this, DBA is actually a more accurate assessment of high frequency noise, often thought of as higher pitched sounds. And this use of the A weighted decibel metric by DEQ standards is crucial for staff's analysis of livability impacts later on in this presentation since vibration associated with lower frequency sounds like amplified bass is another identified impact of these requests. And there's a completely different metric for measuring lower frequency sounds. It's called the C weighted decibel and it uses much less low frequency sound reduction than the DBA metric, which is used by the DEQ standards. So although, um, the code is requiring compliance with the DEQ standards, it's only capturing those DBA sound measurements. So to demonstrate that amplified music during events is compliant with the applicable DEQ DBA noise standards, the applicant submitted a noise study prepared by an acoustical engineer who is licensed in the state of Oregon. This study was conducted on November ninth, which was after the applicant had already installed the fourteen sound dampening acoustic panels inside of their space. The study was performed while a live band was playing using amplification equipment. And the sound levels were measured at the closest residential property lines to the Queen's site, which are identified on this graphic as M one through M four. Sound measurements were taken by the acoustical engineer at night after ten PM to more cap accurately capture noise from the Queen's site while taking into account the traffic noise generated by cars on Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. So the study found that during a lull in traffic, the noise that originates solely from Queens's amplified music does comply with all applicable DEQ standards when measured at locations M one through M four. Those specific measurements are shown in this table, table three from the submitted sound study um, for the four measured locations. And these measurements were taken when indoor sound levels measured ninety-seven DBA and one oh five DBC. So with the doors closed, the loudest measured sound was fifty DBA. This meets the DEQ requirement for noise after ten PM that is occurring for more than thirty minutes in any given hour. And with the doors open, the loudest measured sound was fifty-five DBA, which meets the DEQ sound limit for noise occurring after ten PM when it occurs between six minutes and thirty minutes of any given hour. And to ensure compliance with the DEQ standards, the sound study recommends limiting the amount of time when doors and windows are open. So although the sound study confirmed that the proposal meets applicable DEQ requirements, staff determined that additional mitigation of identified noise and vibration impacts caused by amplified music are needed to ensure that there is compatibility and to minimize livability impacts to nearby residences in accordance with new conditional use approval criterion number five. So as described in the following slides, mitigation measures for noise and vibration impacts recommended by staff are different. Mitigation of noise is focusing on reducing high frequency sound measured by that DBA metric from amplified music, while mitigation of vibration focuses on limiting low frequency sound measured as DBC that is associated with amplified bass. Staff's analysis of livability impacts related to noise references the city's noise ordinance of City Code Chapter five point one five, which limits noise to a maximum sound level of fifty DBA after ten PM as measured from nearby noise sensitive properties. And the city code identifies that anything louder than fifty DBA after ten PM is loud and raucous noise. So the standards of the city noise ordinance are more restrictive than those of the DEQ standards. And the city noise ordinance applies to all properties within city limits, including the operation of events at Queens if these requests are approved. So while the DEQ standards allow these brief instances of noise louder than fifty DBA after ten PM, the city noise ordinance does not include any of those provisions and it caps all noise after ten PM at fifty DBA. So to prevent loud and raucous noise from impacting residents near the Queen, near the Queen's site, staff finds that additional mitigation measures are needed to ensure that amplified music will be compliant with these stricter city noise ordinance standards. Staff is specifically recommending a condition of approval that restricts the maximum indoor measured sound level during events to ninety-two DBA. So ninety-two DBA is five decibels lower than the recommendation of the sound study. And this specific number was determined based on the sound study's maximum measured sound level of fifty-five DBA when the doors were open, when amplification was in use. As this, this number fifty-five DBA exceeded the regulations of the city noise ordinance by five decibels. So staff finds that compliance with the more restrictive standards of the city noise ordinance will ensure adequate mitigation of that high frequency noise caused by amplified music from Queens. Livability impacts from the vibrations caused with amplified bass were also identified. And staff finds that they also require additional mitigation to establish compliance with the new conditional use approval criterion number five. As previously discussed, neither the DEQ noise standards nor the city note noise ordinance regulate sound by DBC, which is that more accurate measurement of low frequency bass sounds and associated vibrations. So staff's analysis references the supplemental letter from the acoustical engineer, which identifies a more restrictive DEQ standard known as octave band limits. So although Queens does not need to demonstrate compliance with octave band limits to meet the Development Code Chapter sixty requirements for noise, the acoustical engineer notes that the octave band limits intend to further reduce noise impacts for noise sensitive properties to protect the health, safety, and welfare of communities. And when the acoustical engineer did the sound study, they found that Queens's amplified music exceeded the sixty-three hertz octave band limit by approximately eight decibels. And the engineer states that indoor sound levels would be, need to be reduced by eight decibels from one oh five DBC to ninety-seven DBC to meet those more restrictive octave band limits for low frequency noise that are again intended to protect the health, safety, welfare. The engineer recommends lowering the indoor DBC sound level to mitigate vibrations rather than it performing any physical mitigation of the site or building since physical changes to the site are cost prohibitive and it's very challenging to control the vibrations from amplified music. Therefore, staff recommends a condition of approval that low frequency sound levels inside the event space may not exceed ninety-seven DBC. And staff finds that compliance with this more restrictive standard will adequately mitigate the vibration impacts associated with amplified bass. So in addition to the recommended condition of approval, limiting sound levels to ninety-two DBA and ninety-seven DBC, staff also recommends for other additional mitigation measures to ensure that Queens can be made reasonably compatible with and have a minimal impact on the livability of nearby residences. The first is that all event activities must occur indoors except for normal loading and cleanup activities. The second is when there is amplified sound, all doors and all windows shall be kept closed except for normal entering and exiting of the building. Third, the secondary west facing entrance leading into the Queens event space must remain closed during all events. And lastly, no sound amplification of any kind may occur outdoors. Staff finds that by complying with the recommended conditions of approval, the impacts associated with both new conditional use applications will be adequately mitigated at all hours of the day. Therefore, staff finds that the proposal meets new conditional use approval criterion number five for compatibility and mitigation of livability impacts for both new conditional use requests by complying with the conditions of approval. Lastly, I'd like to touch on enforcement. So if these conditional use requests are approved by the Planning Commission, Queens will be required to maintain compliance with the City Code, the Development Code, and any conditions of approval that are tied to these applications. And if Queens is found to be in violation of any requirement by the City Code's compliance program, the applicant will be subject to code enforcement proceedings, which could result in fines, court action, and ultimately potentially revocation of the conditional use approvals by the City Council at hearing. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposal has met all new conditional use approval criteria by complying with the recommended conditions of approval. For this reason, staff is recommending approval of the Queens Asian Cuisine Applications subject to the conditions of approval identified in the February first, twenty twenty-three staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for the good presentation. Um, do any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Alice.
Yeah, Brittany, fantastic, uh, data. You probably have never had to say the words DBA and DBC more in your life. Um, quick clarification on the acoustic engineer firm, the test that they performed. You said that that was with a live band?
Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. Yes, it is my understanding that it was a live band using the amplification equipment in
Okay.
in the Queens event space.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lawler.
Thank you. Yeah, great presentation. Um, so yeah, kind of a follow up on that. Um, so basically, I, you know, is there a, a feasible way that bands would know what decibel level they are playing at and they, that so that they could, you know, modulate their output in order to meet these restrictions that have been imposed on them?
Thank you for that question. It's, it's, it was hard to cover all of the details that I think are necessary on this case in the presentation. I think that's a really important point. Um, this came from the sound study that was prepared by the acoustical engineer. The engineer recommended that Queens obtain a sound measuring device, um, to make sure that they themselves can measure the noise and monitor it to make sure that the sound levels inside the event space are meeting the conditions of approval in this case. Um, and, and it is my understanding that the applicant has since purchased such sound device.
And, and again, maybe jumping in on the enforcement angle of this, um, a number of the, uh, comment, comment letters focused on, uh, enforcement and a number of them are in unincorporated Washington County. And they, uh, they indicated that they're, they receive frustrating answers when they complained about a use that was in the city and, and, and I guess inferred that if they're outside the city, their complaint is not, uh, cannot be registered. So do you have any, uh, anything that you could enlighten us on how compliance may, may work if indeed, um, this gets approved?
Yes, absolutely. Um, and I, I believe that, um, Jenna Fox or Robyn McIntyre will want to chime in as well to round out my response, but um, anyone who lives in the city of Beaverton or in unincorporated Washington County must submit any complaints or reports of violations to the City of Beaverton's Code Compliance Program. Um, if someone lives outside of city limits and they call the Washington County, um, Sheriff's Office, they will not be able to register that complaint since the Queen's site is under the City of Beaverton's jurisdiction. Um, if any complaints had experienced confusion or frustration when calling the Beaverton Police Department, that's, that's another story. They, they would have accurately reported those complaints and violations, um, to the Beaverton Police Department if it was after business hours. Um, but in all events, whether after hours or during business hours, all complaints and reports of violations need to be sent to the city's code compliance program so that they can follow up and determine if a violation was present.
So this wouldn't be considered a city code like a, that's something that the police could effectively stop this? Let's say there was some excess of noise and maybe it could be documented that it was in excess of the limits. The police, could the police take action to stop it or would it, uh, be something that would have to be filing of paperwork the next day?
Um, yes. So I will provide my understanding and then, uh, Jenna Fox, um, current planning manager has some additional details to share. Um, the Beaverton Police Department does enforce the City Code after hours. Um, and it, it is possible for them to shut down an event or take action. Um, and we've been told that they use a reasonableness standard to evaluate if noise is too loud and not compliant with the city noise ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I, I will just add commissioners, um, just to build on what Brittany has already stated that, you know, if the violation is occurring in Beaverton, it doesn't matter where the call comes from. If the call comes from a Washington County resident or a Beaverton resident, if the source of the violation is in Beaverton, that's within Beaverton's jurisdiction. If it's, uh, you know, during regular work hours and, uh, they can call code compliance, code compliance can respond. If it's after hours and they call the police department, the police department can also respond. You know, in addition to, um, you know, civil code, I, police respond to noise complaints and noise nuisances, uh, all the time.
Actually, I do have a, a, a different topic. The, um, the fact that the acoustic panels don't have a building permit, do that, does that influence the? the fact that the acoustic panels don't have a building permit, do that, does that influence the, um, their effectiveness? You know, in other words, would the noise study findings be different? If those acoustic panels got a building permit, you know, like is there something, uh, that happens during the building permit that may affect their, um, effectiveness?
I completely understand your question. I appreciate it. Um, and it's my understanding that the building permit is more to cover how the panels are affixed to the wall and ensuring that there is accessibility throughout the space. Um, rather than, um, checking for efficacy or proper installation. Um, it's more just recognizing that something is affixed to a wall and, and just documenting how that has been done and ensuring accessibility. Um, it's my understanding that there would be no change to the efficacy of the acoustic panels.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Commissioner Glenn Michael.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Brittany, for that great presentation. Uh, my question is also on code compliance. Um, I noticed in the staff report on page seven, it says that um, staff was aware that Queens had already been operating outside of, um, the designated hours for quite some time. Um, and obviously it doesn't sound like any code enforcement has taken place in the past. Um, so I'm just curious why that might have occurred and, um, you know, what gives us any, um, um, I don't know, why would we rely on them complying now?
Thank you. Um, yes, we have, we have been made aware, um, at, at numerous stages throughout like the past year or so that Queens has been hosting events. Um, I've been working closely with our code compliance program who's been keeping me up to speed on any claims and violations that they have documented. Um, I'll first just note that past non-compliance or past engagement in any violations of the development code are not able to be considered in our review since it's not an approval criterion for the new conditional use applications. Um, that being said, um, from what I understand about what the code enforcement officers have done to work with Queens is they have let them know, um, at many different instances that they are not able to operate events. Um, and also not able to operate events during the land use process. That has been made clear. Um, at risk of obtaining a fine or, um, moving forward with any court action. Um, it's my understanding that the code compliance team wanted to give Queens the opportunity to comply. Um, while they were going through the land use process, but they did not, um, did not take further action. But, um, that's, that is the information that I am aware of, but, um, I unfortunately do not have the, the play-by-play details from the code compliance team.
Okay, thank you. I just asked because we did receive so many public comments and it is obviously impacting the livability of, of the neighbors and I want to take it seriously if we, you know, approve them to use excessive noise. Um, I think we really need to think about that because that is going to affect the, the neighbor. So, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, if not, we can move on to the applicant, uh, presentation. Um, you will have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourself and stating your names and addresses for the record. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you at the moment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, awesome, cool. Um, okay, so my name is CJ. I'm representing Queen Asian Cuisine and one of the owners that actually um, sharing with you guys what we are having gone through. So listen through everything that you has, have comment with, um, can you guys see my screen? Yep. Okay, awesome, cool. All right, um, so technically I'm here to representing Queen Asian Cuisine for two conditional use meeting, um, um, conditioner use for meeting facility and I send an hour for operation. Um, so first of all, when we built this, this, um, restaurant, um, we mainly focus on for events um, for like wedding, concert, karaoke night, meeting, private party, uh, birthday and et cetera. Um, mainly, I'm sorry if I can get my screen out the way, sorry. Yes. Wow. Sorry, guys. All right, so Queen Ellis is requesting for approval for two new conditional use for application for the first new condition used to allow us to have a meeting facility, lane used to occur to the next assisting, um, property, um, meeting, uh, to host event up to two hundred and sixty, uh, two hundred and six occupants. The second new conditioner uses for requesting for all the allowing extending hour of operation, hosting event later than to, uh, ten P M. Um, so when, when we go through with the, um, neighborhood meeting, there's a lot of concern about the hours. First, when we actually put in our, um, our, uh, applicant, we actually asked for us to actually do, uh, when especially an event on Saturday and Sunday is always to ten o'clock. I mean, eleven, I mean, one o'clock, I'm sorry. Um, but then now we actually got to move back a little bit to make sure that everybody comfortable. So from Sunday to Thursday, we operating from ten A, um, you know, ten, uh, what's it called, uh, eleven A M. Uh, to ten P M plus an hour and a half for cleanup activity. All activity would be done at eleven thirty. Again, on Friday and Saturday, we're hoping to get approval. If we can do it, um, we're gonna go to host it from eleven to twelve, um, A M, which is midnight and then plus an hour and a half to clean up time. Um, and then Beaverton requirement concerned, all city regulation requirement and code are met with all the criteria that we've been, um, working with the city closely on that one. The really main concern that we have right now, which is all the, um, neighborhoods that concern is the sound. Okay, so with the study with Brittany that actually go through with you guys right now, I'm showing you a little bit map on my end on this side is from M one to M four, which is the closest resident that is closest to our, our site with everything like from southwest Alphway, uh, Lauren Hurst Estate, northwest resident and then northeast resident. With this D Q and the requirement of requirement is fifty D, uh, D B A, that's a requirement and we all met that. All the question thing is that when people open out the door, that's actually gonna hit up a little bit higher than that. Um, so the sound engineer conclusion before the sound engineer did the study, Queens already installed fourteen, uh, fourteen panel, two foot by four foot acoustic panel, along with all the wall damp out sound from amplifying the music during the event. Uh, Queens will also limit the sound level inside the resident not to exceed to ninety-seven D B A and one oh five D B C based on D Q, uh, noise control regulation and Beaverton Development Code. The result of the A D B, um, A B D noise study demonstrate that the noise level is the amplify the music proposal um, for event at Queens Restaurant. Um, meet the night noise requirement for the C D Beaverton Development Code in Oregon, uh, D E Q noise control regulation. Queen will all, also will lower the interior level inside of the restaurant not to exceed to ninety-two D B A and ninety-seven D B C to prevent more sound. So that's, that's where the question going to, because the neighbor, based on, on, on the study that we have before, it's like, hey, you have the, uh, panel in, installed, but when the door open, it's a little bit too noise. Um, so we actually willing to actually low it down even more, um, the decimal point to meet the requirement to actually make sure, make sure that the resident actually comfortable with that. Um, with our conclusion, um, we hope that we could get approval for both the conditional use permit. Um, but yeah, that's, that's all my presentation. Thank you so much for everyone to be here, um, today. Uh, if you have any question, please just let me know.
Great, thank you very much. Do commissioners have questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Glenn Michael.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Um, I wanted to ask, I noticed in the application materials that said that the restaurant would be closed during your event. I assume that you'll want to be serving food at your event. So do you mean that the kitchen will be closed to the public? Or are you still going to be using the kitchen to prepare food for events?
No, we only prepare the food for the event. We're not going to be open for public.
So the restaurant will be operating, but it will only be for private events?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Commissioner Lawler.
Thank you. Um, we received some comments about, um, summertime activities and that, um, it has been mentioned by folks that, um, that the doors are open because there's no air conditioning. Could you comment on the ability of the site during warmer weather to maintain uh, activities within the site with the doors closed? Is that possible?
Uh, yes, so I can tell you this. So usually during the summertime where we actually have wedding going on, so we actually have two entrance, one of the entrance is going to be locked at all time during the event. Doesn't matter karaoke night, or we even have any kind of wedding or, um, other events actually going on that day. Um, but when it comes to wedding, you know, when we have a couple coming in, we want to actually pop that door open because the entrance is from the outside into the restaurant. So that is usually always before ten o'clock, I guarantee you, because nobody want to entrance to the restaurant after ten o'clock. So I think that's where they actually get that comment like, hey, the door is open. And, you know, um, you know, the sound coming out too much, but I, I'm pretty sure it's like, you know, I, I, I haven't seen or know because I always out there, um, to see any couple that actually have the door prop open for everybody. But no, we don't have an issue with air conditioning because we do actually have efficient, um, um, H VAC unit to actually work throughout the whole restaurant, which is three unit that are working with our space right now. So it's more efficient enough to actually, uh, accommodate with the number of guests of two hundred and six, um, guests in, in the restaurant.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, and how can you, well, let me, let me ask, let me ask a preliminary question.
Sure.
You have, um, bands come in, like if somebody's getting, having a wedding ceremony, do they hire their own band? And then that, that band sets up or you have a house band or DJ or how does that all, how does the music work?
So the music work is really go both ways. Um, so sometime when we actually have a wedding, um, they actually prefer their own band to come in. Um, and then sometime when we have a concert or something going on like that, and then we actually have our own band that can provide it, the same service as everybody asked for. But the main thing is that we actually have our own A V person who actually adjusts the volume with the music. Um, we'll always use that person, well, our person, um, to actually adjust the volume of music. So that's where we're gonna adjust the sound. Hey, how loud we want to go? This is the maximum we're gonna go. We're gonna let anybody go touch with the A V, um, system on our own.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because that's going to be key to, um, to meeting any noise, uh, restrictions. So do they have, do you guys have the, uh, are you in the are you going to be buying the, the necessary, the both, the, both the D B A and the D B C?
Yes, so, so that's what we're trying to stick to based on the, the last, um, neighborhood meeting, like everybody still, you know, when we have to be, uh, the panel actually install into it, they say, hey, it's still, you know, generate a little bit of a vibration for, you know, the, um, uh, low level decimal on that one. And then we say, hey, okay, you know what, we're gonna step it, uh, take a step back and try to, you know, go a little bit lower. And then actually, instead of meeting the city requirement, we actually go even lower than that to make sure that, hey, we hit that mark, we even go extensive more than, you know, um, than what the neighborhood are asking for. So yes.
And, and what types of activities are occurring once the music is off? And you have that residual hour and a half, what?
So that, that's just all about cleaning up. So just like more like our staffing is going out, cleaning out the table. Um, you know, checking out the trash, but then the music gonna be off at that part of the time. So when, when we state that, you know, hey, we're gonna stop at midnight, music gonna be off at midnight. Everything else gonna be us cleaning up, that's all.
Will there be any outside cleanups, you know, for example?
We don't, we, we do not have any outside, um, table or anything outside for people to sit in drinks or anything like that. So it won't be any kind of activity outside of the restaurant.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, hi there. Um, a couple of questions. The first one, this might be a combination question, uh, both for, for you and then maybe Brittany, um, for staff as well. On the, on the hours of operations, when you were talking about that in the staff presentation, you made a quick comment that we wouldn't actually differentiate between, um, time when music stops versus the time when all activity stops, that the actual important number is the all activity. So, so differentiating between the two is actually not even kind of relevant to the discussion, right? It's just, it's just whatever that final time is, that, that, that's the actual request. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. Their actual request is stop at midnight. And then when we ask for additional an hour and a half is when our crew get to clean up. So then, you know, um, the neighborhood know that we're, everything gonna be stopped at certain time, music gonna stop at midnight, no matter what.
Uh, and so apologies, Brittany, could you verify that? Is it, is it a midnight request or is it a one thirty request?
Brittany.
I'm just waiting to make sure that I'm able to chime in. Okay, yes, I am. Thank you. Uh, I want to respect the procedures here. Um, yes, thank you, Commissioner Ellis, for that question. So both numbers are, are extremely important. Um, the one thirty A M is the ultimate end of the hours of operation request. However, the way the conditions of approval are written, they actually include caveats for when the events themselves need to end within those hours and when the music needs to be turned off as well. Um, but, but you're correct. Ultimately, the extended hours of operation is requested to conclude at one thirty. It's just that the amplified music and the events themselves would end an hour and thirty minutes earlier.
Okay, so it, it would be considered then, um, it, it would be considered to be against the conditional application if the music went past midnight to one thirty, under these, under these conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks you too. Um, and then, uh, back to the applicant. We talked about the doors and which ones needed to be opened and closed and so on. Can you actually lock that secondary door or does it have to stay unlocked for fire code?
Yo, for fire code, we actually have to have it unlocked, number one. Number two, we do have guests coming in and out at the, during the period of time say, hey, if somebody want to go out and take a smoke or something like that, we cannot lock them in. And it just only have them walking out to two, um, exit the door toward to the back of the, um, of the building. So at least one of the door have to be open. Um, but from the sound study, it, it sound like it's only generating not that much within an hour, I believe it's less than uh, six minutes, uh, throughout the whole hour that the door will be prop open, but we always kept that door closed as much as we could, because we don't want to get, and, you know, the sound, um, generate out into our, our, our neighborhood.
Okay, and, and so just to be clear then, we're saying that the, the management of the doors, it's, it's not going to be a hard, a hard egress ingress, it's gonna have to be a physical management. You're gonna have to have employees double check the doors closed, reminding people to use the proper, okay.
Especially, especially when it comes to the summertime, we want to keep the, um, air conditioning running. So we want to pop the, or, uh, the door open for way too long, whereas actually get hotter inside. And then during this, uh, you know, um, vice versa. Um, so we always try to keep that door closed if people come out, plus that door closed on its own, so we don't, we have to manage it. But if we see the door prop open, one of our employees gonna go out and actually close it right away. Um, we don't keep that door open for any longer than five minutes.
Okay, cool. And, uh, you said you have an on-staff person who handles your audio video for things like uh, uh, volume control and stuff. Have you guys already written up some sort of, uh, like, like whatever the standard process is going to be? Where, um, a musical act or somebody who's playing music, they have a written process, they know what they'll have to do. The audio video person will know what they have to do to do the measurements. Is, is that actual process already been created and written somewhere?
Yes, it's already been created on our side. Uh, we do actually purchase a device that actually tests out the decimal of the D B, um, the D B A and the D B C. Um, so with that device that we have on hand, um, with the sound engineers, actually a little bit higher, uh, based on what the, uh, C D code is asking us to do. So now we actually go even lower on that one and we did, um, let the A V person know that, hey, um, this is the maximum. And then with the, the A V system that they have, we can actually put a sticker right next to it. It's like, hey, the volume would not go more than the level it is right now that you're setting. Um, so, you know, he, he is very aware that, hey, you know, Um, so, you know, he he is very aware that, hey, you know, the maximum you're going to go at that level. You ain't going to go any longer than that. So I mean, more than that, so, yes.
Gotcha. Um, and then my last question, um, so you you've, you've already installed the acoustic panels. Uh, you mentioned them in your presentation as as two foot by four foot uh foam panels. Would you mind, could you, could you characterize, like, are they, are they one inch, two inch thick? Are they heavy foam?
It's actually, it's actually an inch and a half thick um into the side uh panel, and then is fourteen of them right now that we have installed um throughout the whole restaurant uh around. Um, but then other than that, yeah, so so it's already been installed, is an inch and a half uh acoustic panel. Um, so it should be efficient enough with our level of, um, you know, of decimal that we dropping down.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Commissioner Glenn Michael.
Uh, yeah, you just mentioned um something that I thought of earlier, which was smoking breaks. Um, one of the conditions of approval is to keep the secondary west facing building entrance closed nearest the stage at all times. Um, and so where do your smokers tend to go? Don't they go out that door?
No, we actually have two entrance door. Um, it is the same, same side. It's one toward to the stage and one actually a little bit off of the stage. So it's actually, it's it's the same angle of exiting. It's just one door mainly is is closed toward to the stage and the one toward to the um was it called the bubble tea side um that they're actually exiting out from. And then they usually just walk off like, you know, six foot away um to smoke, or, you know, we can't really stop them from what they're doing.
So you know that you can keep that door closed and
No, we always lock that door. We always lock that door. When it comes to event, we only have one door open at all time.
I thought you needed it for the exiting for fire.
Exiting is the maximum of three. So it's two, two back, which is one in the kitchen, one toward to the uh restroom. And then the other one is is the main door where people are entering and exit out. So that's the three that we actually require for us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Um, last call for questions of the applicant from the commission. Commissioner Winter.
Uh, can you refresh my memory on when you had these panels, the sound panels installed, please?
Yes, it was installed before um the sound engineer come in. So right about a month, a month before the sound engineer come in and actually do the testing.
Have you had any events since they were installed?
Uh, we do, we do have a couple of events that actually host through. Um, but, you know, with with the door opening, a lot of the neighborhood didn't understand, like, hey, you know what? We have like a certain window when people go in and out, and then they just hear the beat and stuff like that. So that's, that's that's where it goes. And then a lot of time when we actually have like uh police officers to come in and actually say, hey, you know what? It's not even that loud. I I barely hear hear anything when I park in a parking lot, what, you know? So I I don't know, it's it's really up in the air of of what the neighborhood is saying and 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 what's really going on. Yeah.
Hey, other questions of the applicant? Okay, um, with that, um, we can move on to public. To thank you for your time. Um, but that we can move on to the public testimony portion of the meeting. We will, I don't think we have enough testimony to call for in groups. So I think um at this point, um, right, we can just have people There we go.
Chair, if I may, I I understand we have more than one person. So we we should uh call in groups just to make sure that um there's an order, order for rebuttal and ability to respond. So um we may not have people who don't know whether they're in opposition or in favor, but I'm sure we have people who know whether they're in favor or in opposition, and we can at least, at least get those uh grouped.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so we will start with those in favor of the application. For those, um, so we will start with those in favor of the application, we'll move to those opposed, and then we'll move to those neither and opposed or in favor. So we'll call in groups. Um, if for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using the raised hand feature, starting with those in favor of the application. If you're calling in, press the, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Keep losing my window. I have no raised hands for those in favor of the application. So we will move on to those opposed to the application. If you would, uh, for those opposed to the application, uh, please use the raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar or press nine to um, let me know you would like to speak. Okay, I have two hands raised. I will start with Doug Wells. Please remember to state your name and address for the record before you start.
Alright, my name is Doug Wells. I'm here with my wife Laura Wells. Can you all hear me? Great. Okay, we're at eighty-one seventy Southwest Maple Drive. We're the house marked M three on one of the studies, and it's a hundred and thirty feet, I think Brittany had in her, her chart. So we're the, we're the closest, we're the ones diagonally across Beaverton Hillsdale Highway and and Laurelwood from Queens' location. Um, I just would like to to briefly run through a couple of things. Uh, uh, there was an event this last weekend. It did uh run at least until midnight. So um I'm, my wife and I are pretty appalled that it's even happening when they're trying to get the conditional use to be approved. They did run their event. It went until at least midnight. I don't recall it going beyond that, but we felt the 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 rhythmic thumping, the constant thumping. So if they have mitigated, if they claim to mitigate, have mitigated the sound, it's not working. I would just add to that, that you'll see in the studies, the the information that's been provided. There was a study done on November ninth, and Queens did contact us to ask if we could still feel the thumping. And yes, we could. So if indeed they have put in the mitigation uh things, it's not working. And my theory is, is that that they simply need to have a floating floor that's a foot above the floor or something, something that keeps the vibration from transmitting through the concrete over to into our house. We can feel it in our house. Um, so I just want to just caution you that the study, the study itself that's in the papers doesn't show the rhythmic thumping. You, if you look at the graphs, it doesn't show that they've captured the concern. And so, and it doesn't say anywhere in the study that they've addressed that rhythmic thumping. So I don't know if you call it DBC or what, it's not addressing this vibration that we could literally feel in our home. Uh, the third point I want to mention is enforcement is, has been a big problem. As I mentioned, they had an event this last weekend. They've had events since last April when we finally determined where this thumping was coming from. When we call the police, um, the, you could, will they, if they get this conditional use, stop the music, which we anticipate they're going to play the music beyond ten PM Sunday through Thursday and beyond midnight Friday and Saturday? If they're given permit, uh, permission to do that, we we expect that 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 they're going to exceed that sadly. We, our experience is they're gonna, they're gonna blow past that time. If we call the police, will the police please tell them to turn it off? I'm talking about the amplified sound. If if they could stop, a hard stop, when they are supposed to, it would go a long ways. But they they continue to to not uh really think that they need, you even heard the last comment was, they've kind of discounted uh the concerns, the concerns that we even have. Uh, they say, hey, they call the police, or I call the, we call the police, or our neighbors call the police, and to have them come respond to it. And then they, they, they claim they can't hear it. You could feel it. You could, you're standing on it. You could feel it in our home, not outside of our home. It's inside of our home. So they kind of discount the whole issue, and it's frustrating. Oh, the next one I want to say is, my wife reminded me that they did pay for that sound study. Queens paid for that sound study. And if you look at the paperwork, it doesn't capture the concerns we have for this rhythmic, rhythmic thumping. And I I just, I I don't know how these things work, but having Queens pay for their own sound study and then we rely on it, it's just, it's just another problem. Uh, the what, the next point is the the ninety minute cleanup period. I'm really worried about that. Uh, we have another uh establishment across Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. What's it called? Wine and Growl? And and they've been really good, but when they clean up, they, the guys tend to open the doors in the summertime and play loud, the music even louder, which, okay, they fixed the problem. But we anticipate having this ninety minute window as a problem. We would prefer there to be a hard stop that's adhered to, no questions or anything. And if we needed to call the police or somebody needed to call and have them enforce, the police show up, they turn the music off. There's no ifs, ands, or buts, and the police don't feel compelled to give them another twenty minutes. That's the next thing. Uh, and then, uh, oh, that's the, that's the next question I had, is if we call the police, will they take action? It hasn't, we haven't been successful yet. Yeah, it's a two, a two hour ordeal. My wife reminds me that when we call, you know, we have to call, and then they come by, and then they we, we, they'll call again in another half hour, another four or five minutes. You know, we're talking at midnight, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. So will they respond, the police, and have them turn the music off? So we're, we're, our confidence is real low that they're going to adhere to whatever conditional use is granted. And the uh last comment I had is, alrighty. Yeah, the last comment is, we really would hope that we could adhere to the ten PM to ten AM quiet hours and just call it good. Hard stop on all noise.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but your five minutes is up. Do commissioners have any follow-up questions for the public testimony so far? Okay, um. Does Diana Bushwell wish to speak? Your hand was up and now it's down. You are currently, here we go.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
On, um, but I'll keep it off if that's okay. Um, so I am Diana Buswell. I live at eighty-seventy Southwest Maple Drive. So I live two houses down from Doug Wells um to the east, I believe. Um, and I would actually, I mean, some of the notes I'd made are very similar to what Doug has has said. And the fact that they say they've had um these panels installed, that they're monitoring the DB levels or the whatever those acronyms are. I mean, midnight this past Saturday, as I'm trying to fall to, fall asleep, I hear the same thump, 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 you know, continually. Um, so whatever mitigation has happened, isn't addressing the problem. Um, and regardless of if it qualifies for whatever levels of sound are allowed, it it's still a nuisance. You know, I mean, I think as I looked at the city code, you know, there's the requirements that it meets these decimals, but there's also other criteria to define whether or not something is impacting the livability of our home. Um, and, you know, it's frustrating living in unincorporated Washington County, as, you know, I'm not a constituent of anyone involved in this decision, but um, I do appreciate, I can tell that the commissioners have read the written comments that I've submitted, so I I do appreciate that. Um, I did want to make one comment. I believe the um the restaurant owner said something to the effect of there's no seating outside the restaurant. And I've not driven by recently, and I can't speak to what's currently right there, but there have absolutely been times when there are picnic tables out front, and I have seen um patrons sitting at those picnic tables, whether they're smoking or chatting, or I don't know, maybe they're eating or not. Um, I would just want to be absolutely sure that there is nothing outside if this is approved. Um, and then just, as far as the livability, you know, the the enforcement issues, you know, if we're talking about these qualifications of music ends at, I don't recall what time Brittany said, you know, it's eleven thirty or midnight, but they can stay open till one thirty, but this is obviously after business hours. Code compliance isn't who we're going to have to call when there are problems. The police can't know that this is allowed until eleven thirty, and then this other activity is allowed until twelve, when that, when they're not code enforcement. I think that's, you know, asking a lot of an already overburdened police department to kind of know the minutia of this when clearly the enforcement hasn't been happening, when it's very clearly unpermitted. Um, so that, you know, those are, I guess, the comments I have, and I appreciate that you've read my written comments and um, appreciate your further consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, do we have any other people who would like to testify in in opposition of the application? Do we have anybody wishing to speak, neither in favor or against the application? Uh, seeing none, we can move on to applicant rebuttal, um, which is limited to five minutes. Please keep your comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony portion and do not provide any new evidence.
Uh, well, uh, first of all, I just want to answer everything that, um, as much as I can. Okay, um, so within the sound house, where we actually proposed that actually close at midnight, and then we actually have an hour and a half, which is one thirty for us to clean up. So music absolutely going to end at midnight on Friday and Saturday. Sunday to Thursday, music, if it happened, it going to end at ten o'clock on Sunday to the, to to Thursday. Um, but other than that, no, there is no eating outside of there um, of our our space right now. We do have some of the um chairs that are actually sitting outside, mainly for bubble tea people that actually high school student that come by drinking stuff like that. But we can't really stop from people actually at nighttime coming out there and actually, you know, smoking and sit there and talk or anything like that. So activity outside, no, we, we, we don't really actually host anything like drinks outside the property or even um, you know, music outside the property. So you can assure that not going to happen, like um, the very first person that actually mentioned, they hate the music stop at midnight. That's why we try to integrate into the midnight. But unfortunately, I did not know that, you know, the the music actually still making, creating something, something we can work on that on our end to actually tie eliminate down on on our, 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 our number. But we did actually bring our device outside and test it, and actually it's actually at forty uh, forty-four decimal point based on fifty, which is the great regulation of outside, which is to the closest house on that day. Um, but then other than that, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say. I mean, we, we try to fi- follow everything that we could on our end.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, does staff have any final comment?
Yes, thank you. I just want to note, just very briefly, um, staff is recommending additional mitigation on top of the recommendations of the sound study. We agree with the neighbors that there are identified noise and vibration impacts, and additional mitigation is needed um to adequately mitigate those. So we, we are recommending that additional work is done by the applicant. I mean, I believe um, I have this details data about enforcement.
Uh, I guess, yes, questions have been, uh, have risen about the, you know, enforcement issues. And um, you know, we can't control uh whether, you know, at at this, at this point in the application, what the enforcement is going to look like once the, once the use is in play. I mean, police have discretion, they go out there and they will use the reasonableness, their reasonable standard, if if this is an after hours um, uh, violation call, uh, if it's during, during regular hours. Uh, code enforcement will go out there. They have um sound measuring devices. Uh, but, you know, there are other things that the um was raised in public testimony about the vibrations. Uh, that's not something that our code covers. So, I mean, these are livability issues. Um, certainly, uh, we can impose the conditions, but um we can't necessarily always control the enforcement.
Okay, um. With that, final comments are complete. I will close the public test, public hearing. And as standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Excuse me, sorry. Um, I'll start with Commissioner Glenn Michael.
Um, yeah, I, because all of the conditions of approval are basically um, changes to their operations, I don't believe that the conditions have been met, and I would not approve this application.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah, this is a
Yeah, this is, uh, this is really tough. Um, I, I think that, um. You know, I'm, I'm actually, I was thinking, well, maybe it's okay for it to be a meeting site, but I'm. Not inclined to approve the extra hours of operation. I think that, um. The, although the, I think staff has really gone to great lengths to try to craft, um, a series of conditions that. Could potentially manage some of the offsite livability issues. I believe that there are factors that are beyond the control of our code that influence the livability in the case of. Music going, um, into the wee hours of the night, and so. I'm inclined to approve the meeting, uh, portion of the application, but to decline, uh, to approve the hours of operation extension.
Hey, Commissioner Winter.
Noise, noise issues are always tough to adjudicate. Um, let me begin by saying this is not the first. Time we've had noise issues in front of the planning commission, and it won't be the last. There are always difficult issues to deal with. But I think the, the thing that, that strikes me the most about this, that the neighbors have been. Asking for remediation for almost a year. And nobody has come to their help. And I don't mean that derogatorily or negatively. I mean that they have asked the city to help, but code enforcement's gotten involved. But nothing's happened. They, they still cancel it. Police have come out. Neighbors still cancel. We, as a planning commission, should not make decisions predicated on code enforcement, enforcing our code. We see a problem. We, if you're standing on the train tracks and you see the headlights coming. I mean, anybody with common sense knows to get off the track. This is an issue where the train has been coming for almost a year. I am very disappointed, the applicant hasn't taken the steps necessary. To make the livability issues inherent in this application go away. The, the, the whole. Compatibility issue, it says the proposal must be made reasonably compatible. It doesn't say. Yeah, we could probably, should probably hope for it, or it should be made reasonably compatible. It says it must be made compatible. So whatever steps that they've taken haven't solved the problem, and it's not compatible. And I'm sorry, I'd really like to see this business be successful. But until they take a little bit more responsibility for. For their noise issue, whatever you wanna call it, the numbers are fine. I mean, the numbers aren't the problem. The problem is people can't sleep. And I don't know if you've ever been in a situation where you've had, where you've gone to the bed, and someone's. Doing something, whether it's noise or car engines or anything else, you can't sleep. Um, I have, I've got, the property behind me has maddening habit of running their lawn, their. Parking lot cleaning devices, street cleaners basically, at all hours of the day and night. It's. Beyond annoying, it's frustrating, angry, makes you angry. And these people have put up enough, so no, I, there's no way that I think this is a good application unless, and we. You know, we can always say that we can, um, with prejudice and let the applicant make the changes and. And see if he can solve the problem, but as it stands right now, I think the neighbors have said.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis.
Um, yeah, I. I, I think I'm aligned with most of the commissioner so far. I, I worry about, um. The technicalities i- in terms of like chasing the DBs and, and just for context, this is from someone who installed. Commercial sound systems for ten years of his life. Um, that, w- if we set goals and targets, they're so. Ephemeral and hard to actually nail down. Just for, again, pure context, if we have a, if we have an indoor maximum. Ninety-two DBA target for, for the applicant as, as their maximum threshold. Um, a hair dryer, according to the CDC, is eighty-eight DBA. A power drill is ninety-three DBA. That's not very loud. Um, and, and the first person that leans on the volume knob, because they wanna party a little bit harder. It's gonna blow right through ninety-two DB. That's not very loud at all. Um, and thinking about what would technically be really required to. Improve the livability aspects, especially the thumping, and, and, you know, that's, that's not measured well by DBA or DBC compliance. Um, because it, that, that's, DBC is not meant to measure physical vibrations, it's meant to measure free air sound. Um, to, to, to actually kill that, uh, sound panels don't do the job. The only thing that kills vibrations is mass. Pure heavy mass, so that's why concert halls and venues, formal venues, um, are poured on a massive foundation. Um, to soak that kinda stuff up. So I, I just, for what the applicant wants to accomplish. And the kind of events that it appears are currently being held, and maybe should not be held there today. Um, which is a, is a code enforcement issue. Um, I, I don't, it doesn't feel like it's fit for purpose, and, um. Without significant structural overhaul, structural overhaul of the space. Um, I, I, I have a really hard time seeing where it could reliably, consistently, and predictably serve the needs of the community. And not reliably, consistently, predictably violate the, the, the restrictions, um, that any conditional use would put on it, so. Um, I, I lean on, I lean on no approval.
Right, and Commissioner Call.
You know, I agree with the other commissioners also, because the noise level does need to be mitigated by the applicant, cause it's just, uh. You know, bothersome for all the neighborhood, so I'm inclined towards not approving at this time.
Okay, um. Um, I don't know what I think, um, so. Um. We can just move on to emotions and outside. Um.
Chair, can I just, I, I just wanna also, um, say that there, there are two applications before you, so I just wanna make sure that that's clear. When you make your motion and what you're deciding on, uh, if you're deciding on both or just one, one is for. Um, the new, the meeting facilities, and one is for the extended hours of operation.
And we can approve one and not the other. So, that is correct, right?
That is correct. Um. Brittany, is there any, is there any reason why the applications, uh, have to be together?
No, I think that they were, I'm gonna double check, so please hang on one second, but I believe the conditions of approval were written in a way that one was not dependent on the other. And I'm actually, one second. Oh, sorry for that, I just wanted to get confirmation on that. Yes, um, it is possible to, um, allow the meeting facilities land use without. Approving the separate application for the extended hours.
Okay, so maybe Commissioner Lawler, we do separate motions tonight for this.
Okay. Well, then.
The Commissioner Winter is waving his hand.
We, you know, we can also. In, if we deny an application, and deny it with prejudice, which means that the applicant can refile.
Immediately, yeah, or in a month or two, yeah.
What?
Cause. Yes, for, for our new commissioners, understanding if, if we don't deny with prejudice. Then they have to wait, I believe, a year to be able to refile the application. Um. So if you feel like that there is a, a, a path board for them. Sooner than that, uh, with prejudice will allow them to move forward with another application, or refiling this with adjustments.
I just wanna clarify that, that would be a denial without prejudice.
So Commissioner Lawler.
Well, um, then I will move to approve. Case file CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 six. For the Queen Asian Cuisine to have, to allow meeting facilities at their site. And to have a, basically a hard stop of all activities at ten PM. Based on the facts and findings found in the staff report, dated February one. Those conditions of approval and attachment D of that report, and the supplemental memo was received on, uh, February first and February eighth.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I can second that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lawler moved and Commissioner Call seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will do a roll, uh, a vote by roll call, uh, starting with Commissioner Winter.
Nay.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis.
Nay.
Commissioner Call.
Um, nay.
Um, Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Nay.
Uh, and I vote aye. So the motion fails by a vote of three to two. Um. Commissioner Lawler, do we have a second motion?
I move, oop, does somebody have?
I thought Robin was gonna say something, she popped in first.
I can say something if you need assistance with the motion, but I was, I was gonna just offer that if you needed it.
Well, it seems like, it almost seems like a moot point at this point, since we.
Yeah, so that motion didn't pass, but it also isn't, uh, do you want to move for a denial without prejudice?
Oh, you're saying we could do another vote and do, deny it without prejudice?
Yes, rather than the vote you just took, basically the motion to approve the application did not pass. But if you wanna deny the application without prejudice, uh, you, you would wanna make a motion on that, make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Well, um, thank you for that, then I move that we deny case file CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 six. For the Queens Asian Cuisine Meeting Site with, uh, deny that without prejudice.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I can second that again.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lawler, Commissioner Call. I will do another vote by roll call, Commissioner Winter.
I'm fine with that, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Oh, and I vote aye as well, sorry, apologize for that. Um, do we have another motion then?
Yes, um, I move to deny the Queens Asian Cuisine application for extended hours of operation. Which is case file CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 seven. That would, denial would be without prejudice, and that would be based on the facts and findings found in the step, the February first staff report. The conditions are, and, and the supplemental memos that we received on February first and February, February eighth.
Okay, um, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler moved and Commissioner Ellis seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Winter.
Was the motion to deny the motion?
Deny with, without prejudice.
Or what?
The hours of operation.
So we're denying it without. Voting on denying.
You were voting to deny it.
Deny without prejudice.
Yeah.
Right, but we just came to that conclusion without voting on it, and came to the, do you see where I'm going?
Well, we can, we can do that, can't we? Just go straight.
But I mean, it just seemed to be a, seemed to be a leap of logic that we were gonna deny it, I just thought. At the cart before the horse.
Well, I think based on the discussion.
That was, was raised, I was just making a point that. I didn't deny it without voting.
Well, that is my motion.
We should vote.
Well, Malers making the motion, she has the right to make that motion.
Right, but we skipped over the vote to approve or deny, and now we're jumping to deny without prejudice.
Right.
Well, if you.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Ellis seconded, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So we've moved on to discussion of the motion.
Can I, can I just chime in? Can I just chime real quick?
We're having a discussion right now.
So you, you can move to deny without prejudice, you can make that in one motion, the other, the other time you had to make it separately. Because the motion to approve failed, and so basically you just had a, you, you, a no.
I understand it was a logical progression, but I jumped to that conclusion. I'm not usually that logical.
I think based on the discussion we had, it, it makes sense.
Oh, I agree. I was just raising a point that we kind of.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on to a vote by roll, starting with Commissioner Winter.
We're denying, but without prejudice, right?
Correct.
Thanks for that clarification, by the way. Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Call.
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. Uh, Jana Fox.
Apologies for interrupting, Jana Fox, current planning manager. Um, staff did not catch a vote from Commissioner Call on the previous motion to deny. The meeting facilities without prejudice, so could we just get her official vote on the record for that? Which would be the motion, the previous motion.
Sure, aye.
And I think I didn't vote on the very first motion.
All right, what was your vote on the first motion, please?
Um. Nay. Sorry about that. Uh, the planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that provide, will be provided to all parties. That provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable. Provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and Rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So with that, we are now adjourned at nine nineteen PM. Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely.